Twenty six, twenty twenty four is hereby called order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero. Alderwoman Garza.
Present.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Denal.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Marivin is absent.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the appointment of Sergeant Arves for this evening?
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Patty Smith, second by Alderwoman Garza. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Pledge of Legions, tonight's pledge of legions, Clayton, I'll give that to you.
My mic's not on here, but good evening, Mayor City Council, Mayor Protowns City Council. Tonight, we'd be led by the Aurora veteran, the biopic Council Commissioner Dave Turner. We don't need to say.
Give the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can all remain standing, the invocation tonight will be led by our Director of Senior Services and Disability Services, Pastor Katrina Boltwright.
Good evening, let us pray. Lord, we thank you for an opportunity to come before you. We thank you for a city that doesn't separate church and state, but we thank you for leaders that invite us in, God, to pray over their guidance, and I pray, God, that you will continue to give us a heart of thankfulness and gratitude. I thank you that we have a perfect example here tonight on a city that puts that first, God, in a community that raises each other up and puts each other first. God, I pray right now for our elected officials, that you would continue to give them guidance, God, that you would continue to give them clarity, and in a time where there can be division, that we would choose the core values that we align with the most, and that we would lift them up, and that peace would be magnified, and that glory would be magnified, and joy would be multiplied, God, that you would give us an opportunity to show our oneness, God, that we look more alike than we do different, and that would raise up those differences, God, that we have an opportunity to prevail in this city. God, anoint our leadership to guide and provide, continue to give them a plan and a strategy that moves us from where we are to where you call this city to be. May our light continue to shine in this time of thankfulness, and I ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
Wow, that was good.
We have the mayor's office of community affairs, presentations.
Yes, good evening again, Mayor Protowns and the City Council. I want to acknowledge the presence of our United States Congressman, Bill Foster. He has a presentation shortly. We can give him a round of applause. Congressman Foster, thank you so much for your leadership here in Aurora. As we embark on Thanksgiving, we wish everyone a safe and a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. And tonight, we honor this time period with a special Good Samaritan story. Last Tuesday, we watched the story of what happened ten days ago in Ward Nine, the young mailman, the Good Samaritan, Jalen Lockhart, coming to the aid of Mr. Guy Miller. They are both here tonight, Jalen Lockhart and Guy Miller. If you can please stand, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you so much, and all of their family and their supporters. Let's take a look at what happened ten days ago. One second here.
Early tonight, the postal worker to the rescue and the family with a chance to say thank you on Thanksgiving. America Strong.
Tonight in Aurora, Illinois, an incredible act of kindness by this mail carrier. Guy Miller was walking his dog Bentley when he suddenly lost his footing and fell, hitting his head hard. He started bleeding. That's when that mail carrier, Jalen Lockhart, who saw Guy fall in his rearview mirror, did not hesitate, springing into action, helping Guy stop the bleeding, calling over neighbors to assist, asking Guy where he lives, and then alerting his family. Their Ring camera capturing the whole thing.
Hello, post office.
Guy's wife, Marcia, answering the door.
Is there an older gentleman out that lives here?
Yes.
He fell down the road there.
Jalen was filling in for another mail carrier, so he didn't know the Millers. Joining us tonight, Guy and Marcia Miller.
So thankful for, uh, that he did. It could have been so much worse if Jalen hadn't stopped, so we just want to say thank you.
Jalen, the mail carrier, with us too.
When I saw Guy take a tumble, I wasn't sure exactly what I was getting myself into, but I did know that whatever he was going through on that ground, we were going to go through it together.
The Millers have asked Jalen and his family to join them for Thanksgiving next week. Tonight, both families grateful.
We've become family, and that's what it should be, right? We love you, Jalen. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
A special Thanksgiving for sure.
We're so proud of Jalen, and the last ten days have certainly been a whirlwind for both families. Looking forward to Thursday, them joining together for Thanksgiving, and we're honoring Jalen tonight. For those of you with us at Winter Lights last Friday, Jalen had the honor of flipping the switch with the mayor to light the city's official Christmas tree, ushering in the holiday season in spirit that he so well exemplifies. The mayor also presented Jalen last Friday with the mayor's award of service for all of his efforts. Another round of applause for Jalen Lockhart. So proud of you. But as we begin tonight, we have a number of presenters tonight, we have a few surprises for you too. The mayor, who couldn't be here tonight, didn't want to miss this opportunity to have his presence felt as well. John?
Good evening, this is Mayor Richard Irvin. I can't be in attendance at City Council this evening, but I didn't want to miss this special occasion to honor a young man who has proven to be Aurora's own Good Samaritan, Jalen Lockhart. Jalen, thank you again for being who you are, for going above and beyond your call of duty as a United States postal carrier. I know you've heard this so many times in the last week and a half, but let me echo the sentiment of the Aurora community. Brother, we are so proud of you. It was a pleasure meeting you and your lovely family at this past Friday night celebrations, and an absolute honor to have you flip the switch to light Aurora's official Christmas tree and usher in the holiday season. You personify all that the holidays embody. I know I presented you with the mayor's award on Friday night, but I have something else for you. In recognition of your selfless service, it is my honor to present this special proclamation to you, and it reads, whereas Jalen Lockhart is a proud Aurora resident and a dedicated postal carrier for the United States Postal Service, and whereas Jalen Lockhart's actions on Saturday, November sixteenth, were noble, courageous, and inspiring, and whereas Jalen's quick-thinking response in rendering aid to Mr. Guy Miller must be applauded because his actions likely made the difference in the way both families are celebrating this holiday season. Whereas Jalen is a Good Samaritan with a big smile, a bigger heart, and the biggest zeal for life, whose dedication and determination should be emulated by all. So now, therefore I, Mayor Richard C. Irvin, do hereby further recognize Jalen Lockhart by proclaiming his birthday, August twenty ninth, as Jalen Lockhart Day in the City of Aurora. From this point forward, my young brother, keep on living your best life and helping others with it. You make us Aurora proud. Happy holidays to you and your family.
Jalen, if you can do us a favor and unwrap that present right there. Ladies and gentlemen, August twenty ninth, Jalen Lockhart Day in the City of Aurora. Thank you, brother. You can leave that there, join us at the microphone. We have a number of special guests who are here with us this evening, including Jalen's team from the United States Postal Service. We have Manager Mario Perez, Supervisor Paula Feiler, and Supervisor Tanya Masson Delakia. And Tanya is here to speak on behalf of the United States Postal Service. Let's please welcome her.
Jalen, on behalf of Tangela Bush, District Manager of Illinois Two, Victor Whalen, Aurora Postmaster, Dwayne Russell, Puma H., Sandra Swoop, Administrative Puma H., Mario Perez, who's out there, Manager Aurora Post Office, Paula Fieldler, and myself, and all the Aurora Supervisors, Clerks, Carriers, Staff, we applaud you, Jalen Lockhart, and we thank you for how you have responded to our customer, Mr. Guy Miller, and to his injury. Thank you for being a beacon of light in a time of need. The United States Postal Service applauds you, and we thank you for doing the right thing.
If we can do a quick photo in front of the microphone with your award? Come in front of the microphone. Looking straight ahead. Another round of applause for our United States Postal Carriers. We appreciate all that you all do, serving our community. We now have presentations. Although Jalen lives in Ward Ten, his lifesaving efforts happen in Ward Nine. We're going to ask Mr. Guy Miller to please, and Marcia to please, join us down front. Come on down. These are the Millers, everyone. Ask me if you want to come down. We're going to ask Ward Ten Alderwoman Schweta Bade, Ward Nine Alderman Ed Bug, to come down for their presentations, and Alderwoman Patty Smith, who has family connections, coming down as well. Mayor Protowns, if you can please join us at this time. We'll turn it over to Ward Ten Alderwoman Schweta Bade.
On behalf of the community, I want to thank you, Jalen, for your courage, your compassion, and your commitment to making this community a better place. Your impact is immeasurable, and your kindness and quick thinking is an inspiration for everyone. Keep up the good work, and please give Jalen a huge round of applause. Thank you once again, Jalen, and congratulations to Millers too.
Ward Nine Alderman Edward Bug.
Good evening. When you're an alderman, you are never too far away from your ward to know what's going on. And when this incident took place, I was actually not in Ward Nine. I was not in the state of Illinois. I was on a beach in Florida, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. But like I said, you're never too far away. And I got through social media and through different channels, heard about the incident, heard about the news, and then I learned that it took place right off Eola Road on Red Hawk Ridge, and I was overjoyed. The response that a lot of us see every day, our community and our people coming together, helping each other out, helping each other up, and that's what really Aurora is about. Jalen, that was your substitute route that day, but if you've been driving down Eola Road, we have a large digital sign right in the middle of Ward Nine, right at Eola and Heffery, right at our fire station. And on that digital sign, if you've driven by it this week, it says, "Our Ward Nine Hero, Jalen Lockhart."
Alderwoman Smith, eight, we're the old woman.
I was a little bit of an add-on here. I kind of put myself up here. So I know Jalen through distant family connection, and interesting enough, my adult children have met Jalen and Sydney quite some time ago, have been part of their lives for probably ten-plus years. And my kids kept saying, Mom, you know, they're so cool, you got to meet Jalen, you got to meet Cindy, and I hadn't met them. Lo and behold, the week before this occurred, I met Jalen and Sydney at my daughter's wedding. So imagine my astonishment when I see on TV this Jalen guy with dreads in Aurora helps the Mr. Miller, and I'm like, oh my God, how many Jalins can there be, you know, in Aurora? And sure enough, it's Jalen that has the family connection. But you know, oddly enough, we stand up here and we talk about a Good Samaritan, you know, back in the day, being a Good Samaritan was just the thing you did. And today, it's not. And to have a young man who just kind of naturally got out of his truck, stopped his day, and went and helped Mr. Miller, that's a good human being, that's a good person, that's the kind of, yay! That's the kind of person we all need to strive to be more like. That's the kind of world we all need to strive to be a part of. So Jalen, Sydney, thank you for being an example of what the rest of us need to do. Think about this through the holidays. If you see someone in need, someone who needs help, take a moment, stop, give them your time, help them out. It means a lot, and we need to bring our world back to that. So Jalen, congratulations, and you are a hero.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. Jalen and Sydney live in Ward Ten at Lumen Fox Valley. I was on the phone with Sam, the general manager of Lumen Fox Valley, and he couldn't make it tonight, but he gave me permission to announce that Lumen has donated you all a sizable gift card financially to help maybe ease some of your burdens for the holidays. A round of applause for Lumen Fox Valley. Very proud. We also know the Millers, great couple, and we have a special presentation from our Director of Senior Services and Disability Services. Please give a round of applause again to Pastor Katrina Boltwright.
Is this not exciting? Do you guys feel the joy and the timing of it? Our city is so exemplary for honoring this and recognizing this and magnifying it. And so while we have done so much, well-deserved honor given to Jalen, congratulations. I want to say I'm watching him take these deep breaths. Are you guys seeing this overwhelming feeling? It feels amazing though, right? Well, we also want to make sure we recognize and support the Millers. And so we do realize that while that was a blessing, there's another way that we can still help as you go on. So tonight is not just about Jalen, but is it about you? And so through my division, we would like to congratulate you because you're going to get a free snow removal all season long, where you will not have to worry about snow removal. And what I've learned is for our seniors, sometimes the smallest things is the biggest thing. And when you're used to taking care of your lawn and your work, and you get to a place and you can't do it the way you want to do it as much as you want to do it, and somebody comes and helps you maintain that, it's a blessing. So we want you to know that this season, you don't have to worry about your snow, we're going to take care of that. Congratulations.
Katrina, if you can stand right in the middle and take a photo of them, with them? Look, he's traded John. Straight ahead. Another round of applause for our senior division helping out our seniors. Free snow removal for the year. We also have a gift from the Paramount Theater. For Jalen and your family, Sydney, for the Millers, we have two tickets to see Frozen. And on behalf of JH Hospitality Group, you also have free dinner at either Giordino's or Leilani Restaurant here on River Street. So a big round of applause for the Aurora Civic Center Authority and JH Hospitality Realty as well. And then finally, on behalf of our HR department, we have some Aurora swag for you to drink out of, to wear. Another big round of applause for the Millers and Jalen as well. We're so proud and happy for you. Before we hear from Jalen, we're going to turn it over, we can hear from Marcia and Guy, is any thoughts, is you prepared for Thanksgiving dinner with your new family?
Yes.
Yeah, come on down. Marcia and Guy?
You know, I just want to say, it wasn't just that he stopped to help Guy that day, which many people today maybe wouldn't do. I would hope they would at least call nine-one-one. What to me was so remarkable was that Jalen found my house, came to my house, and let me know that my husband was going through a crisis, and when you go through a crisis, you don't want to go through it alone, you want a family member. And so it was so remarkable, so touching to me, that not only did he help him, which was remarkable, but that he took the time to come find his family so his family could go through this tragedy with him, and then waited for me until I got my grandson, whom I had, a little two-year-old, down in the car seat and got down to where Guy was and helped us get him in the car and cleaned up and everything. It was just really remarkable. So we are so looking forward to having Thanksgiving with Jalen and his family and getting to know them at a deeper level, because, you know, when you go through a tragedy together like that, you bond. And so that bond was already there when that happened that day, and I'm just looking forward to that bond going deeper as we get to spend some holidays together, so thank you very much.
Round of applause for the Miller family.
All of the, I'm so sorry. I won't take time. This is just outstanding. Honestly, this and the snow, I haven't let him drive alone or walk the dog alone, so the fact that someone's going to take care of our dry, of the snow is like beyond, just beyond, so thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Pastor Katrina. Thank you so much. You know, you sure, go ahead, no, no, please go ahead.
I'm not going to say much because I'll start crying.
That's okay.
Thank you, Jalen, for his help and all that he's done, and all that he's gone through. I just thank you, everybody in the City of Aurora. I just thank you.
Mr. Guy Miller, everyone. You know, Jalen's on that Ring camera, Mrs. Miller said she was going to take that picture and go down to the post office and post it up, say, everybody knows this guy. Her daughter's like, Mom, it's twenty twenty-four, we don't do it that way anymore. So she went out, went to Aurora on Facebook, posted it, and fifteen hundred-plus likes later, tons of text messages, everybody knew who Jalen was, so a big shout out to Ashley. Thank you, Ashley, we appreciate you, as you've inherited a new brother and sister. It's absolutely amazing. You know, he's been featured on every news channel in Chicagoland. He was in People Magazine yesterday, on World News Tonight last week, he is Aurora's own Good Samaritan. Ladies and gentlemen, another round of applause for Jalen Lockhart.
I would first like to start by just thanking everyone who got here safely tonight to celebrate this moment with my family and the Millers and the City of Aurora. This is, this is a win. This is a win for not only the city, but for my family, but for my daughter, for my grandma, for Ashley. I, I wouldn't think twice about stopping to help anyone in this room, no matter where we are, no matter who you are, I will make sure that I stop and help everyone, I will stop and help everyone, no matter what. I would cherish this day for the rest of my life, and I hope all of you do the same, because this is just a great example of togetherness and community and just love for the holidays. This is, we are in seats that not a lot of people get to sit in, I'm on a stage, you know, not a lot of people get to stand on, and I finally get words, I finally get a chance to say some words to everyone that, I know I may work a lot, family, I may work five, six days a week, you know, I may not text you right away, but just know that this is what I'm out there doing, you know? You know, and so if I don't respond right away, the love is always there, and the love is there for everyone. So thank you to the City of Aurora, thank you so much to Clayton, you have just been such a joy and a wonder to my family and to the Millers. Your work, your work is great, so thank you so much. And to everyone on the stage tonight, I just, I just want to look you in your eyes and tell you, thank you so much for tonight, and, and let's just continue these happy holidays, and thank you so much again.
Another round of applause for Jalen Lockhart. Let's do a group photo, if we can, if Sydney, the baby, can come down. Come on in, everybody, take a group photo. All right, it's your shot as we celebrate Thanksgiving. That is Aurora that you see before you. Our love, our diversity, our strength as one Aurora. Another round of applause for Jalen Lockhart. August twenty ninth, Jalen Lockhart Day in the City of Aurora. We're going to celebrate big, man. Thank you so much to everyone, thank you. If we can ask everyone to please stay seated, we have another presentation, then we'll release them. And we'll release everyone shortly. We are so honored tonight to have with us United States Congressman Bill Foster. He fights hard for this 11th district that he represents, and he brings back millions of dollars every year. Tonight, he's here for a special presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, United States Congressman Bill Foster.
Surely, well, for those of you who don't know me, you know, after all these years, I'm Congressman Bill Foster. And it's been my pride to represent Aurora for all my years in Congress. And, you know, even in a, in a city where the politics is always interesting, you, you see that people are always wonderful. And Jalen's a perfect example of that. And it's also, you know, it's a point in time when the, when so many politicians are attacking our government and say, "Oh, we should just, you know, anyone who works for the government is somehow not doing," any government is somehow not a good person trying to do something good. And, you know, the post office is not like that. It is one of the most loved organizations in our country and, you know, that's your why. And everyone is doing their job like you and representing. Anyway, so, and now, you know, it's my, I represent this area in Washington DC. And one of the, one of my priorities is to make sure that we bring back all of the federal resources we can to the district I represent. And my second responsibility is to make sure that when those resources arrive, they come to projects that really do the most to help the people I represent. And that's why I was so proud to be able to arrange a total of $1.9 million. Two different. They're, they're both for water projects. One, I have to make sure I get this right. It is a, the official name is a, it is the Combined Storm and Sanitary Sewer Infrastructure Project. And the other one is simply just replacing the lead service lines. Because there is nothing more important than having safe drinking water and, and having, you know, our, our infrastructure work well. And so this, these two contributions don't do it by themselves. We are partnering with the city and with the state and local entities to make this happen. Because it's when government works together that it works best. So it's just, I'm so pleased to come up with both of these checks here. The only thing I want to point out is that the, the bill number on here, the bill number is the federal bill number, the check number is the federal bill that we passed to provide this funding. So that's the meaning of that. And I just, I just want to, you know, to thank everyone involved. You know, it, it makes my job easier when we have high-quality applications for the grants that these come from. And the team with the city, it just did a spectacular job, including specifically Ken. Is Ken here this evening? Ken Schroth? He was one of, one of the crucial people on the, to make sure that the grants came through. And so you should all be proud and I'm happy to help you.
Thank you so much. Let's take a picture. We do have Jason coming over here. Round of applause for the congressman bringing back money, always fighting hard for the 11th district, representing Aurora so well. Thank you so much for your support.
Let me just say Congressman Bill Foster is always there for our city. And this is just an example of numerous times where he's come before us and helped us in our community. He's there to represent us and he's doing an effective job in Washington DC. And on behalf of the mayor and the city council and the citizens of Aurora, we thank you, Congressman Bill Foster, for all that you do. Keep up the great work. Thank you, sir.
At this time, we're going to take a brief break as the mayor pro tem makes his way back to his seat. If you were here just for presentations, you are allowed to leave now before the rest of the meeting there. And we'll come back in just a few minutes. But thank you so much for joining us.
Sure. 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 How are you? There you go. Okay. Bill.
They want a picture so I can. Yeah. Because they're checking.
Thank you. You too.
Okay. We'll resume the meeting. Thank you very much for your patience and understanding. The next item on the agenda is the mayoral appointments, 24-0765. Clerk, please call the item.
24-0765, a resolution approving the appointment of Kevin Muhammad and the reappointment of Frank Johnson and Joseph L. Grissin III to the Aurora Housing Authority Board.
Second. Approved by Alderwoman Patty Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any further questions or discussion? There being no further questions or discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
This motion carries. This resolution is approved. The next item is 24-0769.
24-0769, a resolution approving the reappointments of William Whitfield, Cynthia Latimer, Mark Dale Jr. to the African-American Heritage Advisory Board.
Second. Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Bug for approval. Any discussions or questions? There being no further questions, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. Please read the next item, 24-0828.
24-0828, a resolution authorizing the reappointments of Albert Signorale, Michael Saadi, Spiros Kiliopoulos, and Janice Lindley to the Grand Army of the Republic Memorial Commission.
Motion approved. Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any questions or discussion? There being no further questions or discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
This resolution is approved. Please read the next item, 24-0840.
24-0840, a resolution appointing six members to the Aging and Community Advisory Board.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any further questions or discussion? There being none, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. Please read the next item, 24-0828.
24-0828, a resolution authorizing the reappointments of Albert Signorale, Michael Saadi, Spiros Kiliopoulos, and Janice Lindley to the Grand Army of the Republic Memorial Commission.
Motion approved. Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any questions or discussion? There being none, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
This resolution is approved. Please read the next item, 24-0840.
24-0840, a resolution appointing six members to the Aging and Community Advisory Board.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any further questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. Clayton?
Definitely. Thank you so much. Round of applause for all of our new appointees, please. Your appointee to the Aurora Housing Authority Board, please stand. Big round of applause for AHA. We appreciate it. Your reappointee for the African-American Heritage Board, please stand. This lad. You are appointee or reappointee to the GAR Board, please stand. And if you are an appointee to our new Agent and Communities Board, please stand. We're going to ask the mayor pro tem to come down. We're going to do individual photos by board and then we'll do a group photo. So if our members of AHA can please come down. There you go. Thank you. If you can step over to the side, if our representative from the African-American Heritage Board, Cynthia Latimer, please come on down. Representatives from the GAR Board, please come on down. All right. And our newest commissioners of Agents and Community Board, please come on down. Yes. Joining the team. That's Austin's grandmother, if you're wondering why he's hugging her. Say, wait a minute, he didn't hug all the other commissioners? Our newest public service, everyone, the Agent and Communities Board, come on down, everyone. Thanks for your appointment. We're going to do a group photo. Come on in. Group picture of everyone. Thank you so much for your service. We know serving on boards and commissions takes certainly time and your energy and your expertise, and we appreciate you helping us to move Aurora forward. Another round of applause for all of our public servants.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public question to offer a public comment this evening?
We do.
If so, would you please read the rules for public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the first person to offer public comments this evening? Ms. Garcia, you have three minutes, beginning now.
Good evening. My name is Christina Garcia and I have been a resident of Aurora for the past 17 years. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of Aurora Strong Towns. On August 13th, a fellow member and I addressed the city council regarding social and economic inequalities in the city's approach to traffic calming strategies. While we appreciate some of the progress, including discussions with Jason Bauer, significant concerns remain unaddressed. It feels as though the dialogue has been one-sided. We're expected to stay informed through committee meetings, conduct independent research on community developments, yet critical updates on the status of our proposal remain unavailable. Recently, we learned that the city of Aurora received a federal Safe Routes to School grant. However, when we asked Indian Prairie School District 204 why three of the schools were selected to improve pedestrian and bicyclist safety, their response was, "The city chooses those areas." Once again, these traffic calming strategies were implemented in affluent neighborhoods. Our committee is not opposed to the efforts to make Aurora safer for children. However, we question the city not pursuing equity for all its children and all the students. It has been three months since the city council, since we've spoken in front of city council. We're requesting a comprehensive update on unresolved items for our proposal. Specifically, we need a detailed list of all the pedestrian refugee locations in Aurora and the criteria for what's used for their placement. Additionally, the Pedestrian, Bicyclist and Transportation Community Committee only has one set of meeting minutes for this year available on the city's website from March 21st. However, when I click on the link, it goes to a photo of the City of Light's Film Festival rather than the meeting minutes. We ask that the meeting minutes for the entire year be uploaded to Aurora's website in compliance with the Open Meeting Act. Moving forward, the committee needs to ensure that it's posted within 10 days after the meeting is held. The mayor's office recently emphasized the importance of transparency. We wholeheartedly agree. Providing this information promptly is essential to fostering collaboration and trust between our community and the city government. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, please read the name of the next person willing and ready to give a public comment. Hello, John. You have three minutes, beginning now.
Hi. I've been a resident of the city of Aurora since 2005 and I used to live in Alderman Bug's Ward. And I know this city is a great place to live in and that story about the US Postal Carrier helping that guy out is very touching and very inspiring. Well, I'm here to ask for some help if the city of Aurora can do anything, and I'm pretty sure this great city can. I'm a resident of Hesit House and my car has been broken down for a little while. It's not like a $300 repair job. It's probably going to be like a $3,000 repair job or more. And with the move of the men's area from the old place to the new place, you know, Hesit House pretty much told me I either have to get my car fixed or I have to move it off the property. And I'd like to note, I use my car for storage. I live out of two suitcases and two duffel bags. And the lockers Hesit House has... And the lockers Hesit House has are very small, and at most, I can only fit a duffel bag in there, maybe two if I really squeeze it in. And I talked to my current Alderman, well, I texted Mr. Bill Donald, and he said, "At least when it comes to like parking on the street, you can't do anything." And I actually talked to the police department, and they said, "Because my tags aren't current, that the car would be towed off the street right away." And I know the city of Aurora owns a couple of private parking lots right next door to Hesit. There's a 7112 River Street voting, which is the Financial Empowerment Center, and there's a Public Works area. But that Public Works area is gated, and it's closed to the public. So I don't think that would be an option. So I'm just asking, even if I can't get any parking help, if I can get some help to fix my car, that would be great. You know, I do work at The Mary Ann O's in New York, in Aurora, and Aurora. And another burden of having a car that's not working is I have to pay $120 a month to get to work and back, because there's no public transportation on Sundays. And it's usually $30 or so to get to my work and back, round trip on a Sunday. So that's $120 a month. So even if you can't help out with the parking, if I can help, get some help with fixing my car, and I can pay any money back that's loaned to me, I do have a job. And thanks a lot, and I know this is a residency.
Three minutes are up, sir. Clerk, please leave the name of the next person.
Mayor Pro Tem, could we ask Ms. Boatright to chat with this individual?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
She says she has.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Okay. She heard you. Okay, thank you. We'll move on. The next, the next person wanting to give a public testimony?
Glenn C. Urban, Jr.
Mr. Urban, good evening. You have three minutes, beginning now.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm here to talk about proposed Resolution 24-7, 0771, Gales Memorial Baptist Church Petition for Conditional Use Plan Development at the property of 714 Gillette Avenue. For the record, I'm Dr. Glenn C. Urban, Jr. I'm here as representative of my family at 545 West Illinois Avenue. We're located approximately 150 feet from this 714 Gillette, which is part of the petition this evening. My family is opposed to the demolition of this home at 714 Gillette in order to build a concrete parking lot that's destined to be poorly utilized, at most, maybe two hours a week for overflow for church on Sunday, so about 1% of the time. My family is supportive of Gales Memorial Baptist Church finding improved solutions for parking that allows growth for parishioners, but not through tearing down valuable homes in our community. The first issue I bring to the council's attention is the insufficient public notice to the community and property owners sent by the petitioners by order of the Aurora City Council. Surprisingly, this letter is not part of the agenda package and the details for this evening, but I can assure you that this file is incomplete. If you look at the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34 for Planning and Development, Article 5 on Conditional Uses, Section 34, 502, Conditional Use Petition states, "Notice of the public hearing shall be given in accordance with the law. I submit that proper notice was not given to the public, especially not to surrounding neighbors and community based on the letter sent according to Chapter 34 and 49 of the city ordinances. There is no establishment of the fact as to what the petition was itself. I read the letter. I had no idea what it's actually about. I'm sure all of my community members were in the same position. Ultimately, I had to call in to figure out what was going on, and that actually took quite a bit of time. City Aurora really prides itself on communication, being transparent. I think that, you know, I would respectfully challenge anybody on the council here to read that letter and come away with what it actually means. If you can't come away with it, we can't expect that our community members, our neighbors are gonna be able to have any sense of what was going on. So I'm asking that you send this resolution back to the planning commission so that we can go through the proper process. You know, without proper notice in the community, it's impossible for the zoning commission to really do its due diligence and actually considerations of the community and how it's gonna be impacted by tearing a good, affordable house down and making a parking lot. There's other lots in the area, so I don't think it's been reviewed as to what could be done. These lots are clean. They don't have anything on them. The petitioners were denied recently for a similar petition on Gillette. I think those are, those issues are material here, and that's my time.
Thank you, sir. The next person willing to give a public comment, please read the name.
The final speaker is Ray Hall.
Mr. Hall, welcome. You have three minutes, beginning now.
Thank you. I came tonight to speak about a term I heard about last week and this week. It's de facto political organization. But since Mr., the presentation for Jalen was tonight, I'm gonna pass and not do that. And I wanna thank Pastor Katrina for her prayer, 'cause it touched me enough to make me wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and I'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Happy Thanksgiving. Is there any other person willing to begin and give a public comment this evening?
No one else is registered.
Okay. First item, we have a public hearing, 94-0927. Please read the public hearing.
94-0927, Public Hearing Regarding An Ordnance Vacating A Portion Of Dedicated Public Right-of-Way For Middle Avenue Near The Property Located At 600 South Lake Street In Kane County, Aurora, Illinois.
Does the staff have a presentation for the public hearing this evening? No? Okay. Is there anyone from the public would like to be heard this evening to discuss this public hearing? Are there any questions or comments from the city council?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Been moved by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman, Alderwoman Patty Smith to close the public hearing. Please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
This hearing is adjourned. Next, we'll hear both the consent agenda and the direct counsel consent agenda in full. Will the clerk please now read both items in full?
24-0585, A Resolution Authorizing The Director Of Purchasing To Process A Change Order In The Amount Of $801,000 To The Agreement With FGM Architects Of Oak Brook For Architectural Design Engineering And Construction Services For Fire Stations Number Nine And Number Thirteen. 24-0723, A Resolution Authorizing The Execution Of A Joint Funding Agreement With The State Of Illinois, The Execution Of A Phase Three Construction Engineering Services Agreement With Thomas Engineering Group In The Not-To-Eccede Amount Of $133,128 And The Appropriation Of $785,000 Of MFT Funds For The Indian Trail Resurfacing Project. 24-0750, A Resolution Authorizing The Acceptance Of Vendor Proposals And The Execution Of Contracts For Janitorial Services At Various City Buildings For A Term Of Two Years With Two Optional One-Year Extensions. 24-0755, A Resolution Authorizing The Appropriation And Expenditure Of MFT Funds For Snow Removal Operations In 2025 In An Amount Up To $1,359,600. 24-0763, A Resolution Authorizing The Award Of Contracts To Supply Process Chemicals For The Water Production Division. 24-0764, A Resolution Authorizing The Execution Of A Phase One Preliminary Engineering Supplement With Stanley Consultants In The Not-To-Eccede Amount Of $82,127 And The Appropriation Of $85,000 Of MFT Funds For The Farnsworth Avenue Traffic Signal Modernization Project. 24-0770, An Ordnance Amending Chapter Six, Section 6-2 Of The Code Of Ordinances Regarding Complimentary Licenses. 24-0771, An Ordnance Establishing A Conditional Use Plan Development And Approving The Gales Memorial Baptist Church Parking Lot Plan Description For The Property Located At 714 Gillette Avenue. 24-0817, A Resolution Authorizing The Execution Of A Phase Two Design Engineering Agreement With Kimley Horn And Associates In The Not-To-Eccede Amount Of $289,541 And The Appropriation Of $290,000 Of MFT Funds For The Indian Trail Signal Modernization Project. 24-0838, An Ordnance Amending Chapter Six, Sections 6-5, 7, and 20 Of The Code Of Ordinances. 24-0839, An Ordnance Approving A Revision To The Savannah Crossing Plan Description On 1.15 Acres Of For Property Located At 1390 Butterfield Road. 24-0841, A Resolution Approving A Final Plan On Lot Eight Of Savannah Crossing Subdivision Located At 1390 Butterfield Road For A Drive-Thru Facility Use. 24-0845, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 29 Of The City Of Aurora Code Of Ordinances. 24-0847, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 22 Harassment And Discrimination By Specifically Adding Article 22-4 Reasonable Accommodation Process. 24-0849, A Resolution Authorizing The Director Of Purchasing To Utilize The Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract To Enter Into An Agreement With Interiors For Business Incorporated In The Amount Of $88,572.25 For Replacement Workspace Tops At The Aurora Police Department. 24-0856, A Resolution To Execute A Five-Year Contract With OpenGov In The Amount Of $1,166,386 For The Implementation And Use Of Their Cartograph Enterprise Asset Management System. 24-0857, A Resolution To Accept The Proposals Received For The 2025 Water And Sewer Division Emergency Repair Program. 24-0860, A Resolution Establishing Procedures For Setting Ambulance User Fees For Emergency Medical Services. 24-0866, A Resolution To Accept The Proposals Received For The 2025 Water And Sewer Division Plumbing Service. 24-0867, A Resolution Adopting Unit Bid, Unit Price Bids For The Purchase Of Various Water And Sewer Repair Materials For The 2025 Calendar Year. 24-0868, A Resolution Adopting Unit Price Bids For The On-Call Full Replacement Of Disturbed Lead Water Service Lines In 2025 Within The City. 24-0869, A Resolution Authorizing The Director Of Purchasing To Execute A Change Order To The Existing Contract With WBK Engineering In The Amount Of $45,950 For Storm Water Modeling Associated With The River Edge Park Phase Two Expansion. 24-0872, An Ordnance Vacating A Portion Of Dedicated Public Right-of-Way For Middle Avenue Near The Property Located At 600 South Lake Street In Kane County, Aurora. 24-0873, An Ordnance Annexing Property Located At 1457 Indian Avenue To The City Of Aurora Pursuant To A Water Service Agreement. 24-0874, An Ordnance Vacating A City Easement On The Property Located At 1002 North Farnsworth Avenue In Kane County, Aurora. 24-0875, An Ordnance Annexing Property Located At 676 Austin Avenue To The City Of Aurora Pursuant To A Water Service Agreement. 24-0876, An Ordnance Annexing Property Located At 361 Eastern Avenue To The City Of Aurora Pursuant To A Water Service Agreement. 24-0888, A Resolution To Execute A Contract With Vertosoft For The Purchase Of OpenGov E-Procurement And Contract Management Systems To Modernize And Standardize Procurement Functions Across The City In The Amount Of $127,679.50 Through 2025 And Annual Software Costs Through 2028. 24-0443, A Resolution Accepting The Improvements And Maintenance Security For Deerbrook Place Canyon Creek Court. 24-0832, A Resolution Approving Reduction Number One For Lincoln Prairie-Dell Webb Phase One Traffic Signal Installation And Intersection Improvements SEC Of Dell Webb Boulevard And Eola Road. 24-0833, A Resolution Approving Reduction Number Two For Lincoln Crossing SEC Of Wolf Crossing And Eola Road. 24-0900, Approval Of The Minutes Of The Tuesday, November 12, 2024 City Council Meeting. 24-0914, A Resolution Accepting The Improvements And Waiving The Maintenance Security For Rush Copley Medical Center, Salt And Grounds Building.
Taken.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderwoman Garza. Are there any questions or motions to remove any items from both agendas?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes. I move to remove item number 24-0833, Resolution Approving Reduction Number Two For Lincoln Crossing, Southeast Corner Wolf Crossing, Eola Road. Two unfinished.
Second. Okay. Most of them made it second, so it'll be removed and considered later on this evening. Any other questions on any other items?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Alderman Lash?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up and see if Mr. Sevan's available to talk about the property located at 714 Gillette Avenue, Agenda Item 24-0771, with respect to notification that was given to residents.
Good evening. Ed Sevan, Planning and Zoning Director. Notice was done properly. In fact, as the council knows, we now do it in English and Spanish, so it was per, per the zoning ordinance. We've done that, and it didn't meet our criteria.
And does it say that the request is, are zoning change on the, on the notice?
It was, it was a conditional use plan development was what the request was, to allow the church parking lot on a residential zone property.
Just a quick, a quick follow-up question. What is our plan for this property once we, once we demolish the building? We're gonna turn it into a parking lot. Do we give it to the church, or are they paying for it?
So this is not city of Aurora property? It's owned by the church right now?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Alderwoman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Clearly stated in our information that this is, property is owned by the church. We cannot stop the church from tearing down a house, that a property in which they own. So I don't see how we, you know, there's, there's nothing we can do. That's not our privy. It's not our property. So they're asking to be rezoned. We can prevent that, but we can't prevent them from tearing down the home.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Clerk, please call the roll for both agendas.
With the exception of item 24-0833, Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The direct, the consent agenda and the direct counsel consent agenda are both approved. Next would be go to, go to unfinished business, 24-0632.
24-0632, An Ordnance Approving An Option Agreement For The Purchase Of Two Properties Located At 201 North Lake Street And 213 North Lake Street And Authorizing The City's Officers And Employees To Complete The Transactions Contemplated By Said Agreement.
So moved. Taken.
Then moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderwoman Garza. Any questions or discussion regarding this ordinance?
I do, Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm sorry?
I, I do.
Alderman Lash?
Sure. Just to the questions on the appraisals of these properties. Looking at page nine, the appraisal for 201 North Lake Street, pages nine through 11, they look for comparable properties in this appraisal, and the only comparable property in Aurora is valued at $42.37 per square foot. The other comparable properties are at $58, $63, $56 per square foot. And then on, on 213, we come up with something similar where the comparable properties stretch outside of the city of Aurora, and the only comparable properties in Aurora valued at $49 a square foot and $39 a square foot. Yet we're paying, on, on the 201, we're paying, I think, $63 a square foot, which is far above those in the city of Aurora. So I think what we're doing here is somehow paying a little bit more than what these properties are worth. are worth.
May I address that as an agent, real estate agent? Properties are worth what people are willing to pay for them.
We're the ones, we're the ones that are paying.
I, I'm just saying, but you, you can't, you're valuing property and comprehensive, you know, having comprehensive and comparable properties are good, but in the value of a home or the value of a piece of property, regardless of who's purchasing, and I'm just stating it for, as a real estate agent, it's worth what the person and/or body is willing to pay for it. So your points are taken, but I'm just saying, you, you can't say what it's worth because it's worth what, what someone's willing to pay for it, that's the worth.
We're, we're the buyer, and I'm saying that what, what we currently are offering this person is above fair market value for the City of Aurora, and why would we do that?
Alex, or Alex, would you like to address that?
Alex, Alex, the Andrew Chief Management Officer, I'm sorry, so the question is why we are paying the amount we're paying based on the item tonight? Well, first of all, this tonight is an option, it's not a final purchase, and I think the Legistar clearly enumerates the benefits for the city to take on this option, they are numerous, we've stated them several times at both Finance and at, I'm sorry, at, at COW, and Alderwoman Smith is right, sometimes depending on the strategic acquisition, you may pay a little more, sometimes you pay closer, but an appraisal is a point in time, and so we have every confidence that acquiring this option gives us that flexibility for the reasons we stated, I'm, I'm happy to go through it, but I don't really want to read the, the items that we talked about last time, if, if you'd like to, we can recount those.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman Smith.
Yes, will you, so this is an option, this ordinance is about an option for you to purchase, if the purchase was something that you choose to move forward with, do you come back to us before the final purchase occurs?
We have pre-negotiated in this option the purchase price, which will be locked in for 365 days, and we would come back to secure approval for the purchase.
Thank you.
With, with the City Council vote, to be clear.
I'm sorry?
You, you would seek approval from the City Council?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Okay. Any further discussion? There being none, please call the roll.
Mayor Proton, excuse me. Is there going to come back before this body? I'm, I'm not certain that's what the language on the last page, page five.
Mayor Proton, I believe Alderman Bog is correct, this does, as currently drafted, not contemplate subsequent council action, it does allow the authorization to purchase based on the, based on the grant, grant authority today on the option.
Yeah, the wording in Section Two and Section Three, this would not come back to council.
Yes.
Corporation Council, look at the whereas on page four, which would be applied to the purchase price in the event the city exercises the option to purchase, then the rest of that sets the price, it talks about the, where the funds would come from.
I believe Sections Two and Three after the ordaining clause, where Alderman Bog is making the observation as far as the...
So the mayor's authorized to sign an option agreement, further authorized to take all necessary action, exercise or determine not to exercise the option to purchase in consultation with yourself.
That could be potentially a typo, that could have been, I mean, that was intended to be City Council when drafted, but that's where, if there were to be an amendment tonight, that's where you would...
So I could tell you, the intent of this all along was to secure an option and lock in a price, but then come back if we ultimately decide to exercise the option, to come back to council for final approval, but there will be no additional price increase or anything like that, it would be set at what has been agreed upon for the option.
So does the council want to consider an amendment then to that effect?
Mayor Proton, I'd like to make an amendment to Section Two.
It's moved by Alderman Lash, second by Alderwoman Smith.
To, to add the words, "after approval of such action" to the City Council.
No, you didn't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Section Two, that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign and execute an option agreement substantially, as set forth in Exhibit A, attached here to, the mayor is further authorized to make all necessary action to exercise or determine not to exercise the option to purchase the subject properties after approval of such action by the City Council in consultation with corporate council. So the, the amendment adds the words "after approval of such action" by the City Council.
Can I just say, that sounds fine, except if we decide not to purchase the property, your language says we still come back here for that, so I think you mean to make that if and when we are exercising the option to purchase, correct? Because before that, it says either action to exercise or determine not to exercise the option.
I, I think, if I may, the amendment would be better placed conditioning the authority in Section Three, are further, are further authorized, mayor, city clerk, and city council and corporation council upon further action by the city council are authorized to execute any and all documents necessary, that would allow the mayor to determine not to exercise the, the option, but if the option was exercised, then Section Three would require city council approval first, so I think that's...
That's clear.
If you would accept it as a friendly amendment, Alderman, I think that would accomplish everybody's goal.
If you want to read that again, how you would adjust it, then somebody can make a motion in a second.
We would be proposing amending Section Three, that the mayor, city clerk, city treasurer, and corporation council are further authorized upon to express direction of the city council to execute any and all additional documents necessary to complete the purchase of the subject properties following approval of this resolution.
Still moved.
I'll second that.
Moved by Alderman Lash, second by Alderman Tolliver, any further discussion on the motion only? Please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
The amendment carries. Any further discussion on the ordinance itself? Please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
This ordinance is adopted. The next item, 24-0708, I understand there's a request to, to hold this for two weeks till the December 10th meeting, we need a motion to that effect, Corporation Council.
I, I think with unanimous consent, if the council wished to hold 24-0708 and 709 until December 10th, that could be done by unanimous consent.
Do we have unanimous consent?
Still moved.
Okay, make it so, thank you. And then go to the next item, 24-0709, that's the same thing, so that will be under the December 10th, 2024 meeting, so we'll go to item number, then 24-0812.
Are we holding them to December 3rd or December 10th?
My notes say December 10th.
December 10th is what's indicated on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, thank you. 24-0812, a resolution requesting approval to lease computer equipment and purchase traffic cameras for the Aurora Public Safety Departments using funds received from the Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services Technology and Equipment Program and Emergency Telephone System Board funds, still moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco, Jeff, did you have a report you wanted to go?
Thank you, Alderman, Mayor Proton and members of the council, Jeff Anderson, Deputy CIA, I believe I should present here since we brought this as unfinished business from the COW meeting, so what we're after here, and I've just passed out a handout that's probably hopefully a little bit easier to read than what's on your iPads, we're, we're here to talk about the, the items in red on the first page, so this is another grant that Representative Foster's office gave us as well, for a public safety grant, and so we were here to spend half of this earlier in the year, and that's our 24-266, which are the items in green, we had the items in red underneath the CCTV cameras at the top, we have, we've had some installation overages, some labor costs, and some changes in the field we needed to make, those are those costs in that first section listed in red, and then the primary reason I'm here is to, to discuss the lease of new, new computing devices, laptops for the police and fire department, and so that's the second group there, called laptops, there are the two items in red, and just quickly, I don't want to spend, spend too much time talking about the I chart on the next page, but we have, what we were able to do, and I want to point out that our partner from inside, Bob Irwin is here, from inside in Hanover Park, and helped us walk, really work, work our way through this, what we were able to determine is that if we purchased outright the laptops that we, that police department desired, we'd only be able to purchase devices for about half, probably about, about 42, I think it was, percent of the police department based upon the, the purchase price. You can see the omnia contract price, we negotiated with, with our friends at Insight to get lower than the omnia price here on, on, on this by, up to 22% in one case on, on here, and if you go all the way to the far right, you can see that leasing over three years actually saves us $185,000 over purchasing the devices outright, so that's because Panasonic and Dell will take those back, and they'll be a fair market value for those, they will, they will be able to refurbish those and then go resell those again, completed. The peripheral devices, we will, we will keep and use those, those are mostly docking and, and power devices within the vehicle, so we'll continue to use those beyond the three-year life of a laptop. So that's, that's the discussion there concerning these, the, the issue that came up after Finance and before COW was, the folks at Panasonic said we prefer to just lease the Panasonic devices, and so we, we worked with Insight to have Huntington, is there a signee, we'll lease those through, through Insight, you can see in the lessor column on the right, we have Huntington's going to help us lease the Dell devices that are in both columns, both the laptop and the peripheral columns, so that was the change that made us bring this back to unfinished.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Yes, Alderman Lash?
I'm going to assume, I mean, these are very expensive laptops, I'm going to assume that the lifespan is presumed to be three years, or is there?
Yes.
A four, four or five-year option, because then, I mean, once you extend beyond the three years, the value, of course.
Correct, what, what you run into is, it's kind of a double-edged sword, even if with, with components in, in the laptop not working as well, but also the software now all of a sudden requiring a higher processor than we've purchased, right, and that's, that's, we're in both of those categories now with the devices we have.
Okay, and then my other question is, these are per vehicle, not per officer, or does each officer get one?
These are per officer, that change was made in the, the, the last time around when we bought the GTAC machines outright, was, the preference of the police department was to have each officer be responsible for their own device.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
This motion carries, the resolution is adopted.
24-0850, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to purchase video conferencing hardware and services for the new Public Works Facility from Burrwood Group for a total amount not to exceed $255,027.72.
Still moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco, any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Motion carries, this resolution is approved. 24-0858?
24-0858, a resolution approving a one-year amendment to the existing agreement with ZenCity Technologies for the ZenCity Pulse Survey Platform in the amount of $45,000. Still moved.
Is there a motion? Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco, any questions or discussion regarding this resolution?
Yeah, I'll, Mayor Proton? Yeah, I just want to make sure, because I asked a question on this matter, and, and the information was forwarded to me, I just want to make sure it was forwarded to all of the Aldermen, I did, I did not verify that. It was a total amount for our contract with ZenCity over the three years, and I don't see it attached here, that's...
Yes, sir, Alderman Bog, I did send that to, to Rich Jacob in the Alderman's office, and he did say he was sending it to everyone, that, that text that's in that email is actually the first paragraph in the discussion section of the cover memo.
All right.
For anybody who hasn't seen it yet.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? There being none, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
No.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Nine yes, two no.
Motion carries, this resolution is approved. New business, is there a motion to suspend the rolls and to consider items?
We have also served one, one more.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, we had one item that was pulled off the consent agenda, please read the item.
24-0833, a resolution approving reduction number two for Lincoln Crossing Southeast Corner of Wolf Crossing and Iola Road.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco, any discussion?
Yes, yes, Mayor Proton.
Alderman Bog.
Thank you. Just to be consistent with my past statements on this, this is Lincoln Crossing, we discussed the new development, Lincoln Crossing South, a few weeks ago, so I will be voting yes for the reduction, however, on the record, as I put on the record last time, there is still much discussion that needs to happen between the developer and the residents on when this is going to get turned over to the residents in HOA, and they are looking at that very closely, I want this to be, you know, done in a harmonious way, so there's no dissension between the developer and the residents, they believe with the delay on Lincoln Crossing South, that is, is going to go past the statutory limit, that is their feeling, so I urge our departments to continue to meet with Pulte and whatever representative is there, there's no HOA yet, so they don't have a representative, but continue to talk so that we can work that out in a timely manner.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
This motion carries, this resolution is approved, now we can enter, make a motion to suspend the rules and consider items on a new business, so it's moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
Motion carries. Will the clerk please read the item of the first item under new business?
Twenty four, zero, eight, seven, seven. A resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter into an agreement with Wesley United Methodist Church for the hosting, managing, and operation of temporary warming center on an as-needed basis from November 27th, 2024, through March 31st, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $44,700.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Do we have a staff presentation, Alex?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Alex Alexander, Chief Management Officer. Viviana Ramirez and Martha Pashke, if they could come up as well. So what you have before you is the culmination of a significant staff effort since last winter to look at an alternative way to offer a temporary warming center in the city of Aurora for those evenings where the temperature got to the point where we needed to provide respite from the cold, temporary respite from the cold for individuals who are otherwise unhoused. So I'm going to turn it over in a second to Martha and to Viviana to go into some of the details. But I just wanted to say that we put an RFP out. We had Wesley United Methodist Church respond. They responded in a very significant way. Reverend Tammy Scott, who unfortunately could not be here tonight due to some family illness, stepped up with her parish and the support of the Methodist Church. And significantly, and joining us in the audience tonight, too, are other community partners who will stand not just behind the city, but behind Wesley United Church to effectuate, if you approve tonight, the provision of the warming, temporary warming center at their church. And we are blessed to have such subject matter experts in our community, starting with Joe Jackson from Hesit House. Joe, would you stand, please? We give Hesit House and Joe Jackson a round of applause. Reverend Fish, partner from, I'm sorry. And then Michael Sherad from AID. All three organizations have been invaluable in providing support, not just to the city, but to each other. And they have stepped up. So when we met with Reverend Scott and talked through all the details, it was very consistent. In fact, Reverend Fish attended the meetings and discussions. And so we worked out what we believe is an outstanding template for up to 30 nights. We budgeted $44,700 to provide temporary warming center services for whoever bid and met the criteria. So we're pleased to announce that Wesley did step up, has met the criteria. And I'd like Martha to go into some of the details, and then we're available to answer questions.
Martha?
Thank you. Martha Pashke, Director of Innovation and Strategy. As you heard, Wesley United Methodist with Head Pastor Tammy Scott, who sends her regrets for not being able to be here tonight, was the sole respondent to the RFP for a temporary warming center. Having this warming center hosted by a community partner will align us with national best practice. We were pleased to receive their proposal, which covers all of the needs for hosting, managing, and operating the temporary warming center for the winter of 2024 to 2025 through March 31st. If anyone's looked at the weather forecast, it's already dropping very cold this weekend, so we know this need. We'll be pressing this winter based on our emergency management coordinator's assessment of the weather. We assumed 30 nights. You'll notice in the contract, there is a contingency to authorize an increase if needed. So that, that part is covered. We were pleased to see that United Wesley, or Wesley United Methodist Church, sorry, partnered with the subject matter experts who were named and called out here tonight, including Hesit House, AID, and other church partners, including Becoming As We Go, with Pastor Fish, who's here to answer questions if needed. The weather parameters were all laid out similar or the same as what the city has done in the past. Their proposal includes training, which the city will be helping with, as well as Hesit will be helping with, as well as security, which is a cost the city has always had for temporary overnight warming center. And available for questions are Chief Community Services Officer Viviana Ramirez, myself, and our partners that are here.
And if I could just add on the training. So both APD and AFD are going to provide the necessary training to the staff of Wesley. They have advised us that they have, I believe, 30 individuals ready to go to work as the center is activated, depending on the nights. And so we are bringing this to you now so that we already have some training set up in the next week or so. And the church has been very accommodating. We have really talked through a lot of things. And as you recall, last year, when we had the unfortunate situation that resulted in closing our longtime site at the train station, Wesley heroically stepped up and tried to provide services, but they weren't able to sustain it. And so Reverend Scott came into this process with her team, very open-minded, with an open heart, and learning and wanting to dialogue with us, and learning from the experience last year, and learning what we were able to provide. So I think this is an opportunity for us to start this year, and hopefully with each other's support and continued guidance, and with the partners stepping up as well. I think it will be a successful collaboration. And again, we're very grateful to the church for stepping up and bidding and talking to us and getting an agreement set.
Thank you. And I do remember that last year, the church, Wesley Church, did step forward last year and provide that service to the community, and much-needed service. And we thank everyone that participated last year, and again, your offer to do this this year is commendable, and it's people like you that make Aurora great. So thank you very much.
Mayor Protem.
Alderwoman Smith?
I, too, want to applaud everyone who was involved with putting this together, being proactive, getting ahead of this as we, it is going to get cold, and it gets cold fast. Very important and needing, needed warming center. And thank you to Wesley Church for stepping up as well. You guys did, did great work. Thank you. It's nice to end the meeting with something that feels, feels good at ending it at a time like this, where we're getting ready to give thanks for Thanksgiving. I thank you guys for taking care of those who will need this center in the upcoming months.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes. Alderman?
Thank you. I echo some of those sentiments, not only to Hesit House and Wesley for stepping up. Probably the most important people in the room tonight are those who take advantage of the warming center and have in the past. And we have some of those people in the audience tonight. So my question, Viviana, we corresponded, I had to go back and look at my notes because it was some time ago. So the warming center, we are still going to have the same setup. It will be, of course, the building. It will be blankets. It will be food, but it will not be cots. Is that correct?
Thank you, Alderman Bog. Viviana Ramirez, Chief Community Services Officer. In partnering with the organization Wesley, what we decided to do is try to provide a template, but we are deferring to them their expertise. They obviously are providing the building. They're providing the conditions. I, they are including water, a snack. And as far as the blankets, I'm not sure what they've decided, but we're here to support them in their decision-making.
So we'll work together on, on how that is rolled out.
Yes.
Well, at the end of the day, though, it's their decision. It's their call. We're not, we, as you can see from the RFP, put out certain minimum requirements, which they're meeting. But at the end of the day, it's up to what they want to do and what they want to provide.
Sorry. Just add one more small piece.
Them being our vendor, of course, and we and them want to get out to the people who will eventually use the warming center, exactly what they'll be taking part in if they go there. If there is not room at Hesit House, and they have the ability to get to Wesley in the cold temperatures, of course, they want to know, you know, what, what they're going to be entailing there. So certainly, we'll at least have dialogue. And of course, we'll both want to promote exactly what, you know, what those residents will encounter.
Yes. They also are committed to working with additional community partners to secure additional funding and resources as they need. So we will stay in touch with them and, and follow up as needed.
Thank you.
Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just to answer your question, last year, Hesit House let Wesley borrow the cots, and in a group, signal group chat, where they're doing the same thing, I think, this year. And I also just wanted to commend staff for putting this together and bringing the community together to address this. And then the final note is on the de-escalation, CPR, first aid training, and so forth. If we could also, I don't know what the relationship is with getting the volunteers for Wesley, but if people from the community want to join that, we probably need to somehow publicize that, if they want to get the training to be qualified to volunteer at the center, because it's mostly a volunteer effort.
So actually, the Wesley folks are going to be paid because we're in the agreement. We're, we're giving them money towards that. And right now, they have enough volunteers and staff to handle it. If it becomes an issue, we have said that we have employees who, on their own time, at their own risk, so to speak, could do it after hours. And then I think we're going to leave it up to Reverend Scott and the team if they want to expand that. Now, the training will be given to the 30 folks initially by police and fire, and then we'll see from there what other needs they might have.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll. Please call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved.